Remember, we've already had 26, over 26,000 personnel turn on the gap. So, on our way to another busy year, with that said, we're kind of in what we call the holiday downward lull that always occurs with between Thanksgiving through the holidays. With that said, this week, we've only got 1,500 troops on the gap training. 10 through 16 December, number began by 100 to 1,400 troops. And the week of Christmas, it will begin at a very minimal number of only 907, which for us, that's not a lot of people. Our neighbor Sally isn't here, her close neighbors, I'm sure she'll be pleased to know in the month of December, we have no loud training going on, all right?
New Year of Christmas.
For Christmas, New Years, Hanukkah, all those great things. But, we do maintain that caveat as we always do. That can be subject to change due to the needs of the nation or deployment. If that so happens, we will put that word out at least 24 hours in advance via our social media as our most effective means of communicating with our neighbors, letting them know if we have any loud training that's going to come up. Also, I want to mention, we are Army Airfield, second busiest heliport in the United States, daily flights out of there. And also the bowling air-to-ground range, which is heavily utilized by fixed-wing aircraft. That will be in operation many times, although, other than aircraft noise, that's usually fairly disruptive. So, our neighbor, our federal partner neighbor, the VA, on the 14th of December, they're planning on having a large race across America. Parking is going to be, some of the auxiliary parking is going to be on the gap, that will be well marked. You can go to the VA and get the terms of that. So, we're going to have shuttle buses available for them and working with our partners with the VA and other organizations. Hopefully make that into a great event. That event has been growing exponentially every year. Very beautiful thing, so we fully support it and keep on going with it. So pending any of your questions, that's all for today.
Questions, commissioners?
No, just thank you for everything you do.
Well, thank you. It's an honor to serve everybody.
Thank you, David.
Thanks. Thank you very much. And we won't see you before the holidays, so have a Merry Christmas and all that stuff.
You all too.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, the minutes. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as they're printed. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. The minutes are approved and we have our treasurer's report with a guest presenter this morning.
Okay, well, it's the end of the year, so not much to look forward to here. Receipts for the the 4th and the 5th of December were $588,913.62. We had a total cash of $1,451,031.96 minus our expenditures of $1,239,591.97 and minus our tax claim of $7,923.97, leaving us a cash balance of $203,516.2.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the treasurer's report as presented. And I assume there are no questions. All those in favor of approving the treasurer's report as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Treasurer's report is accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Chief of Homeland Services and with me today is Bob Southely, our place supervisor who after a little over 38 years of service, he's going to be retired December 17. Bob's been a very dedicated, dependable, reliable employee. He's done an outstanding job for us. I wish him well and actually going to miss it. Every day. So I do have a request of lock and everything works out well for him and without help for the board.
Thank you. It's almost believable, Jim, that you're actually going to miss it. Actually, I think we'll miss you as well. And I don't know who's going to get that foster parents dinner together next year.
It won't be me.
All right, well, why don't we, we have a proclamation for you. Why don't we have Jamie read that first and then we'll give you an opportunity to make some comments.
Whereas Robert L. Bob Southely began his career with the County of Lebanon employed as a caseworker for children and youth services on June 23, 1980. Whereas assigned to the Protective Services Unit, Bob served the children, youth, and families of our community by performing an excellent job dealing with various types of flight issues in order to meet their needs. Whereas throughout his tenure as an effective and valued employee, Bob's analytical ability served him well regarding his relationship with staff and the cases he supervised in foster care since December 1992. And whereas regarded as a major asset to the agency, Bob served the county with devotion and commitment, providing integrity to his profession. He performed his duties and responsibilities in a professional manner which reflect great credit upon himself and Lebanon County Government. Whereas December 18, 2018, Bob will retire as a casework supervisor for the office of children and youth with over 38 years of distinguished service. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of all our citizens, unite to thank Bob for his many years of hard work, faithfulness, and dedication on a job well done. Further, we extend congratulations and best wishes for a most rewarding future and the very best retirement.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
Move to approve.
And I'll second that motion with pleasure.
All those in favor of adopting the proclamation as read indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Proclamation is adopted. Why don't you share some thoughts with us?
Well, I appreciate all the support that I've had over the years. I have enjoyed most of the things that went on, you know, in this job. There's always frustrations, you know, but still, the caseworkers and the fellow workers with me, we've always, I think, worked well together. I think that makes a difference, you know, within our agency, you know, how things are done. There's always going to be complaints. I mean, we're the center of complaints. But, you know, I just want to thank, you know, I think the benefits that we've had with the, within the county has been good, you know. I think the health insurance and the, you know, vacation time, the sick time, all those things are nice to have and given use, you know, so thank you for all those things. Otherwise, I appreciate the time I've been here and I'm ready to go on to my next slide.
Next slide. Understandable. Commissioners?
Just thank you. You can tell by how the, your employees react to you that there's a lot of respect there and love there and you have one of the most challenging jobs that our county has to offer and you really handled it for all the time you've been here with distinction and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Keeping our children safe is a really big deal. You and your fellow employees who are here do that so well and we are indebted to you and them. I just want to say thank you because it's a tough job. You can't please everyone, but as long as the children are upheld and kept safe, they're innocent victims and I thank you for what you do. I mean, it's an admirable job, an admirable, admirable vocation, and one that we certainly appreciate. At least, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's not much left for me to say, but I personally appreciate everything that you have done for the county and you've done a really great job as far as I can see and your department head obviously speaks highly of you, so thank you very much and we'll give you the proclamation. Can you, can you take the decision?
Sure.
This is our staging area right here. Have you not been here when we've done these before?
No. Going forward, is that what the administrative assistant does?
So, here's the proclamation. Sorry, we're going to get some photos here. Did your department head bring his camera?
I have no idea.
I'll make sure you, since this is the only camera that's working, I'll make sure that you get a copy. Congratulations.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Are you not headed to Florida like Rob Cale was? Rob Cale, he left that day. Oh, yeah, let's get Jim in here. There we go.
I guess chairs in the way.
Thank you again. Now, we're ready, huh?
Michelle Lee, Director of Human Resources. Lee Anne Shank, Human Resources Assistant.
Moving on to personnel transactions. Melissa Martinez, Deputy Administrator 2, resignation effective December 7. Norma Swiner, Secretary B, correction in her termination with elective retirement effective November 6. Samantha Avila, Probation Officer 1, resignation effective November 30. Emily Cruz Fernandez, Secretary B/ Interpreter, resignation effective November 30. Brittany Straub, Full-Time Developmental Assistant, resignation effective November 29. And Joan Sowers, Regular Part-Time General Clerk C, resignation effective December 28.
I'll sub move to accept those resignations and terminations.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the resignations and terminations. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Under FML leaves of absence, Valerie Anderson from the prison, six weeks of FML effective November 14.
Move to approve.
Second.
No motion and a second to accept that leave of absence. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, Elizabeth Getch, promotion from Caseworker 2 in Children and Youth to Casework Supervisor at the rate of $1,526.26 by weekly effective December 17. Indira Gonzalez, promotion from Customer Service Specialist/ Interpreter in Domestic Relations to Intake Officer/ Interpreter at the rate of $1,470.77 by weekly with $57.69 by weekly interpreter pay effective December 3. Christina Rivera, promotion from Team Clerk in Domestic Relations to Customer Service Specialist at the rate of $962.91 by weekly effective, oh, excuse me, December 3. James Hunt, change of status from Casual Part-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office to Full-Time Deputy Sheriff at the rate of $1,145.69 by weekly effective December 17.
Sub move to approve the status transfers and promotions.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second for those changes of status. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Under other transactions, Area Agency on Aging would like to rehire Michael Yakum as an Aging Care Manager 2 at the rate of $1,267.90 by weekly effective January 7 and that is 2019 rate. The District Attorney would like to hire Samantha Pappas as a part-time central booking agent at the rate of $12.84 per hour effective December 10. And Warden Carins would like to rehire James Sarwine as a maintenance mechanic at the rate of $1,068.59 by weekly effective December 17.
Move to approve those transactions as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those hirings. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all the transactions previously read plus the following. Chris Mailer, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, $500 one-time payment effective December 6. Owen Williams, full-time correctional officer at the prison, long, or, excuse me, incremental increase at the rate of $14.79 per hour effective December 30. Bryson Loper, Jeremy Luce, Dakota Palmer, and Kayla Ecker, all telecommunicators from the Department of Emergency Services, all moving to the rate of $17.23 per hour, all effective December 2.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve those salary board changes as read. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, or approved.
For mandated conference seminars, I have Ted Conley, Carl Stumpf, Mike Keener, Kerry Winsler, and Tanya Kip from the Assessment Office would like to attend the South Central Chapter AAP meeting in Goodisburg, December 7, with mileage meals, tolls reimbursement, three credits mandated by Department of State. Dave Arnold from the District Attorney's Office would like to attend the 2019 Midwinter Meeting in Pittsburgh, February 12 through the 15, 2019, $675 total registration fee with lodging, meals, parking, tolls reimbursement, 10 credits mandated by the PA-CLE Board. Daniel Wright from the DA's Office Detectives Bureau would like to attend the JNET-PA Chiefs' Meeting in State College, December 13 and 14 with lodging reimbursement mandated by JNET. James Doty and Ethan Whiteall from probation services would like to attend the Weapon Control, Weapon Retention, and Disarming Training in Harrisburg, December 17. Meals reimbursement, eight credits mandated by PAFETC. Susan Miller from probation services would like to attend the following two trainings, the Coaching and Mentoring Skills Leadership for Leadership Success in Harrisburg, February 12, 2019, $79.60 total registration fee with meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by PBBP. And Leadership and Management Skills for Women in Harrisburg, January 11, 2019, with $79.60 total registration fee, meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by PBBP. And a previously approved training with a rescheduling date for Jamie Deschon from probation services. The Advanced Firearms Course 8 in Lancaster has been moved from November 16 due to inclement weather to November 30 with meals reimbursement, eight credits mandated by Firearms Education and Training Commission.
Sub move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve those mandated conference attendances. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Mandated conferences are approved.
Under requested, I have Carol Davies from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the PDA-P4A quarterly meeting in Hershey, December 5 and 6, $110 total registration fee with mileage reimbursement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to allow Carol Davies to attend the requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So it's approved.
Barbara Moody and Edward Killian from Clerk of Courts would like to attend the Criminal Case Processing in Mechanicsburg, January 7 through the 11, 2019, with mileage and tolls reimbursement.
Sub move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to allow that attendance at that requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So it's approved.
Barbara Moody and Edward Killian from Clerk of Courts would like to attend the Criminal Case Processing in Mechanicsburg, January 7 through the 11, 2019, with mileage and tolls reimbursement.
Sub move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to allow that attendance at that requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Yvonne Munez and Sherry Bany from Clerk of Courts would like to attend the Juvenile Delinquency Case Processing in Mechanicsburg, January 14 through the 18, 2019, with mileage and tolls reimbursement.
Sub move.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second for attendance at that case processing seminar. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
And Yvonne Munez from Clerk of Courts would like to attend the Dependency Case Processing in Mechanicsburg, January 30 through the February 1, 2019, with mileage and tolls reimbursement.
Sub move.
Motion and a second to attend that requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Michael Anderson from VODR would like to attend the Election Reform Workshop in Harrisburg, November 30 with mileage and parking reimbursement. Is that the correct date? I believe so. It's November 30. It's passed. That is the correct date.
I'll second.
I just, I know, I'm sorry, I missed that one.
All right, I have a motion and a second to grant approval for the VODR conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
And then a previously approved training with the change of attendee, Jeremy Leffler would, is replacing Gary Burna from LCDES to attend the Microsoft Excel Basics and Beyond in Harrisburg, December 3 and 4, with $128 total registration fee with mileage and meals reimbursement.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second to attend that seminar. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Stephanie Schirck, and I have Ellen Lawrence, a master gardener from Lebanon County with me today. We would like to share some information about the re-energized movement for the Ginger Prior Memorial Garden at the Lebanon Ag Center. Pass out some packets for each of you.
Okay. I'm the chairperson of the Ginger Prior Garden. I'm a three-year master gardener, so I'm fairly new at it. We were, we were asked to be on committees and I fell in love with the Ginger Prior Garden. I never knew Ginger Prior, but from what I understood, she created the master gardeners in Lebanon County. She was also a part of the state as a...
As a statewide master gardener coordinator.
Right. And I just love the garden back there and what I'm proposing and what we're doing at Lebanon County is, at the extension offices, we're having a fundraiser to, to have people buy bricks that are personalized and, or memorial bricks, to put out at the terrace that we, it's like the entrance way into the, into the Ginger Prior Garden. It's behind the Penn State Extension Building. This, this here is what the brick looks like. The brick comes from Brick Marker from Florida. It's not an engraved brick like you would see in some of the pavers that, we have it in Anvil. I'm from Anvil. So in Anvil, they're engraved, this is laser. So this is supposed to last a lifetime. What I'm asking is $25 a brick, which is pretty reasonable. I know some are going as high as 85 to 150. We're going to only make a profit of $7 a brick and that profit will go back into the Ginger Prior Garden for, to get other materials we need to lay these bricks, plus bricks. I know there's some funding for the Ginger Prior Garden due to her husband and family that put money into that garden. We are, we have, so far, we had put some of the pamphlets, which I think I gave you each one. Feel free to fill it out and send it into the Penn State Extension. Or if you have any friends, you would be welcome to make copies. But, this is the Ginger Prior Garden. This would, this is the part that faces the building, this here. And this here, which is this here part that's in your packet, this is the terrace or the entrance way into the Ginger Prior Garden. This is what we'll be working on. This is what I'm planning to get, you know, to have us do hopefully this year. And we're trying to make the garden look even better than it does. Right now, we're also looking at putting a pergola back there with a patio. My plans for this is hopefully to have like events back there for the community. I'd like to have a harvest project going back there, maybe sell mums to put more money into the Ginger Prior Garden. And, you know, just have the community come and have some fun. It's a beautiful area. I think we don't use it enough and I would like to see that happen in the future.
Well, you can put me down for a brick.
Oh, you can have that? You do have one of these.
I do, yeah.
If you need more, I have some in my bag. We do have these in some of garden centers. I also have, my son has a little shop in town. He has some in his shop. I'm looking at seeing if some of the shops in town will put these in their shops for me. I'm looking at looking into Anvil because I'm from, I live in Anvil, and anybody else that would do this. We are not, we only started this project in November, so it's fairly new. We are looking at getting 100 bricks. The reason for 100 bricks is that I think I can sell 100 bricks. I have to sell 100 bricks or ruin this money on the project. So I'm going to have to work hard at selling 100 bricks and I think we can do it.
We're just excited to have the master gardeners, just having renewed interest in this effort to memorialize all the work that Ginger Prior did for Lebanon County and for the master gardener program. It's a beautiful space back there and it's wonderful that they want to help to grow it and have it even more beautified to continue the education and teaching that we do there with that program for those volunteers. So, thank you for all your support of the master gardener program.
Absolutely, and thank you for your efforts here. I'm sure you'll be successful. It's something to look forward to. We don't need any action here, but...
So unless we want to, well, we can put out our own pocket if we want to buy a brick. Commissioner says so.
And if you need more, I can, I need more forms, I can win that for you. Or like I said...
We can copy it.
Yeah.
So thank you for the opportunity to come and share more about it and, yes, if you know anyone else who would like information, it's as long...
I have an interest in doing one from the Lebanon County Commissioner, the board. We can do that.
That's wonderful.
So if I have a motion to that effect, we can act on that.
Well, I'll sub move, but I mean, I do want to pay for that in my pocket, $25 because... Pardon?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Just, I mean, to go on record, that's fine, but I don't expect a candidate right...
No, well, I thought the, I mean, I intend to purchase ones as a county commissioner. I thought you were proposing that we have one, one of the three of us.
I did, but I still want to pay that.
I don't pay that along, absolutely. So, we'll take that action. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So we will be doing that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And also perhaps individually as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Marilyn, also thank you for, you contributed to the, helping Pat Kerwin with the trimming of the, all the landscape and everything out there.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah, we're going through a little bit of a time for everything to get a haircut.
Trust me. I've been out in those gardens.
This was a real growing season this year.
Oh, it was.
And just for your, for your education, we leaned on the master gardeners a little bit to, to help us with what should stay and go and all that. They did a whole play. So now they're out there doing it.
And I actually do so. And I actually work on our garden. I'm a, I'm an elementary school nurse at Southeast Elementary and we have a garden out there and I help with that. So I just can't get out of there.
Well, initially too, I think Ginger was a part of that. And it had been a muddy shade. We're still here, but we got some flowers out front of the courthouse for nuns. And so that was a big deal because everybody said, well, you can't grow flowers. It's too shady for the trees and things like that.
Oh, you grow flowers.
Yeah, so now we have flowers. So, you know, I think family of Ginger and Lily and that, so they helped us establish the flower. Now we have fellows that love to do gardening as well, but it was tough getting it established.
It's so nice you got, you were able to know her. I did not know her. I heard her from up there.
Yeah, and I remember her honeybee display at the, I think it was 4-inch fair, happening in the big hall, the grand hall. And she just was so creative, wasn't she?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Let me get you some. Let me get you some.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right, everyone, wanna introduce yourselves, proceed.
I am Bob Dowd, Director of Department of Emergency Services.
Sherry Brown, GIS.
Here this morning to ask the commissioners to accept two grants. The first is the annual RRF grant, which is the Radiation Emergency Response Fund. This grant goes towards maintaining our preparedness to respond to emergencies involving radiation and EFC incidents. The grant's amount is $15,000.
I have a motion in a second to accept the radiation grant. All those in favor indicate by saying aye and aye. Opposed, so order.
The next grant I have is a 911 15% funded grant in the amount of $2,628,866.87. This grant is going to be used to deploy a regional call handling system between Auburn and New Yorktown, as well as a regional Texas 911 system, which is in the future for Lebanon County and the associated connectivity to make that all work. And then there's also a $750,000, roughly, $750,000 piece of this that will go towards bringing Lebanon and York County's GIS pieces up to compliance in the old National 911 systems.
Specifically, I will be adding address points, so that's something we've wanted to do for a very long time. So every structure will get an address point and then that will be shared, obviously, with Department of Emergency Services and it'll get used in the CAD system and the next generation 911, so that they can dispatch using those address points.
So if there are multiple buildings on a parcel, for instance, say three, would it be, I don't know, 400 building one, building two, building three, or how about that?
Well, it's livable structure, so, you know, if you have a shed or something, we're not necessarily looking at addressing that, but if you have a home and a nanny, a nanny pod at the back or something, and we would, we would look at having, you know, two separate addresses or something like that. And eventually down the road, apartment complex could have, you know, 100 address points on it, depending on how many addresses there are on that property. So it's a big project, we've been wanting to do it for a long time, so it's exciting. I'm gonna get to do it.
And from a 911 and computer aided dispatch standpoint, this allows us to validate the actual location of that building and make sure we're sending the appropriate help, which is something we do now by address range. We need to take a road and divide it into equal segments and we assume that we're getting pretty close. This is a much more accurate way.
And can you tell me what CKE stands for?
All Processing Equipment.
Thank you. Well, I'll make a motion to accept the $2,628,866.87 grant.
All right, I have a motion in a second and I would just like to compliment both of you, but particularly Bob for the, you know, reaching out to other districts and in this case, York, because I think we all recognize that that's the way we're going to get the most bang for our buck or get the biggest buck. And also it makes sense, so I appreciate your efforts in doing that.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion to accept the grant as presented indicate by saying aye and aye. Opposed, so order.
Thanks. Thank you. Can we put Barb switching around to the gym there?
Sure. Absolutely. You're always in attendance, but not always presenting, so welcome, welcome in that role.
Good morning commissioners, Barb Smith, the statutory for the courts. And the purpose for my being here today is to request permission to gift some of our historical volume books that we have downstairs in the vault to the Lebanon County Historical Society. Initially, I thought that we could give them on a permanent loan basis, but the time restraint and the possibility of any damage, anything at all happened to the books, they said that they would give them only on a fixed debt. So I'm here asking permission. And I don't, I have a list of volumes that they are most interested in. I also have a list of what they might be interested in, once that has been completed. So if you wanna, I have an idea.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what type?
Session dockets, execution dockets, jury lists, election dockets, physician register, veterinarians register, dentists, divorces, register of automobiles. And these go from 1810 to 1970. Most of them, they're 1850s to 1930s.
So they registered automobiles at county level?
They did, they did. The first automobiles purchased in Lebanon County. So these are, you know, of interest to some people, but currently they're in our vault downstairs, they're never being accessed. We would keep a list of everything that has been gifted to them, so if anybody came and wanted to see them, we could, you know, refer them to the Historical Society and say that's where they're now being housed.
Do we have them scanned?
No, nothing is scanned.
Or will they be scanned though?
I guess that.
I'm just thinking because they will deteriorate with use and I wondered if someone scanned them for research purposes.
It's very costly to just do one book alone. So at least they would, currently, like I said, they're in very good condition. He was surprised because they've just been down in the vault for many, many years, so...
Because of floods.
Yes.
They flood particularly.
Yes.
And they're, they're, they probably have better preservation techniques at the Historical Society than we would have here.
I believe so, and I did keep the, the holders that the books are currently in. They have rollers so you can pull them out easily and they said they would possibly be interested in taking those as well. Otherwise, they're going to be scrapped, so...
So it would be the books and the hardware?
If they want them, yes. If they have the room. So they initially, there's 309 volumes, plus there's 24 in the premonitary's office that they did not see, and they limited. They cannot take all of them because of their space as well. So these are the ones of most interest, but the list is two times, three times this what I gave you.
Can you meet the Storage Space Society?
Yes, we want to, our juvenile and our medical health records downstairs, so they're on the ground, but again, they are not accessible to the public.
I'm going to approve the gift to the Historical Society.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the gifting of certain records as requested by the premonitary. All those in favor indicate by saying aye and aye. Opposed, so order. Barb, thank you.
Thank you.
Did he forget he was coming back?
Well, we're going to schedule him to dance here. He's here. We'll do that.
Yep. Helping brotherly celebrate.
He's eating cake.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Your twin sister was just here.
I know. Oh, how embarrassing.
Sherry Prunus Brown, GIS.
Dan Sutter, Texas Extension Office.
What we're looking for is to amend the pictometry contract. So we made this contract of pictometry approximately three, four years ago. As part of that contract, the Change Finder tool was a part of that in the first and the second project. And due to weather conditions and other factors, we didn't get the imagery quite when we wanted to, and then that pushed it back to where it didn't make sense to do the Change Finder in the first project because we were coming up on that second project. So we talked about it and we decided to scrap the Change Finder from the first project, which was a savings of approximately $27,426. And that was budgeted in my 2018 GIS budget. What we would like to do is make an amendment to the contract and basically with some of that money, we would like to purchase 15 extra tiles that they would do at a higher level of imagery. So we would be capturing some development, I believe. Do you want to speak to where?
It's at various points. There's a couple around Palmaro, a couple up in Jones Town, and then a couple down here south of the city.
Right, so we would actually be able to capture some higher level imagery at a cost of $12,707.50. Then the remaining 2,500 or so would just go back to general fund, but we would like to be able to have that out, we would pay for it out of this budget year. And then with the flight that would be occurring in 2019, we would get that better imagery.
And can this be done this year yet, since it's in this year's budget?
Yeah.
Okay. I think it's my turn, so I'll some move.
I have a second motion.
All right, I have a motion in a second to honor the request to make some changes in the contract and utilize the other funds as needed. All those in favor indicate by saying aye and aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so order.
Thank you.
Good morning again.
Good morning commissioners, I have two items for your approval here this morning. First one would be for supplemental invoices for fiscal year 1718 in the $74,815.55.
Second?
I have a motion in a second to honor that request. All those in favor indicate by saying aye and aye. Opposed, so order.
Thank you. Second item, first quarter invoices in the amount of $1,753,796.61.
Also move to approve the first quarter invoices.
Sorry. I, I know. So I need a second for the motion. Second. I have a motion in a second to approve Mr. Holtrey's second request. All those in favor indicate by saying aye and aye. Opposed, so order.
And the final item would be a budget amendment that would allow me to file an appeal. We were overspent in fiscal year 1718 in the amount of $26,508. Normally that's what you would file your appeal on, but we were able to bring in additional federal revenue, 4E revenue. As a result, it's kind of a new, but we didn't spend all our, act 148. So in my mind, that should be owed us. I don't know if it's gonna fly, but in my mind, that's what I think we should get. So I'm gonna file an appeal in the amount of $136,437. At the very least, we'll get the $26,000, I would anticipate getting $26,508. I just really think we didn't get that money, we should have, should have owed to us.
What is that budget amendment?
Right.
Second?
I have a motion in a second to honor that request. All those in favor indicate by saying aye and aye. Opposed, so order.
I just wondered if they needed action on that.
The budget amendment will do the, prove of the budget.
Yeah, but the appeal you don't.
No.
Well, we got any insurance. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
I can move mine if...
Hold them one time.
No, when it's too close, it doesn't appear it knocks down. Thank you for remembering that, that's very nice.
All right, all set for me?
Yes, sir.
All right, the 2019 county budget, according to county statute, must be put on display for 20 days, so, finding by the calendar, I'll go through the summary of that today and ask for your tentative approval of it to be back here again on the 27th of December to take action on it finally after the 20 days. So I'll start and I hand out a summary along with pie charts and tables that outline the budget, highlights of the budget. For 2019, we're looking at a county budget of $83,453,703. That is at a millage rate of 3.2925, which is the current millage rate, so there is no tax increase being proposed for 2019. This budget overall, the $3 million budget overall, is increasing by 6,965, or 9.1% for 2019. That is largely due to significant one-time expenditures, such as a new voting system and a 911 call handling phone system, which Bob Dowd alluded to earlier in the meeting. Separately from those expenses and those one-time purchases, the general fund is going up by 2.5% to $46.7 million. This, again, is the same millage as, as prior, so there is no millage increase being proposed. The last time there was a millage increase took place for the 2016 fiscal year. Some of the highlights of this budget are things that I just felt necessary to point out, or that the, the annual required contribution to the pension fund will be fully paid for the sixth consecutive year at cost of $3.1 million.
They're selling mon and house, you know, the emergency mon.
Their own speaker. Thank you. Again, the annual required contribution to the pension fund is being fully budgeted and that's to be paid from general fund revenues and agency reimbursements and keeping up payments of the art, along with investment returns, have brought the county pension fund to a funded level of 86.2%, which is the highest funded ratio I can recall for a long time. The salary increases for employees as follows, according to either non-union or bargaining units, are 3% for non-union. The court-related Teamsters, 3.5%. Court professionals, Teamsters are currently under negotiation, their contract expires at the end of December. Social services, Teamsters, 3%. County detectives, 3%. Correctional officers, 3%. And EMA telecommunications, 3.5%. There's, there are several new positions that have been approved. I felt it necessary to, to note two of them, since effectively these positions are, have an impact on the county operation as a whole. First being that there's a deputy chief clerk position that's approved in this budget for the commissioner's office. Obviously, that's somebody who would report to me and be my deputy. You know, this is something that's been considered over the years, been suggested, batted around, and earlier this year, as you recall, we had a discussion about this and you've now formally approved that position. I appreciate your support for that. It's just the kind of job that... This has been proposed due to the ever-increasing threats and acts of violence to government offices in the nation and here in Pennsylvania. I don't want to speak for the sheriff. He can certainly chime in if he like, but the intent is to have a presence here at the building entrances to the courthouse, but as well have someone in a vehicle going from district M.D.J. office to M.D.J. office, depending on the load of court at the given days at those offices. The person, the deputy may, deputies may remain there for a period of court time, also to make a presence at the satellite offices. So, to circulate among them, stop by, make sure things are, you know, are all going well and if there's any need there. So, did I capture that, Sheriff?
You captured.
All right.
We also provided an additional vehicle in that budget as well.
Right. Right. Also, the warden has received approval to implement a revised pay scale to combat the disparity of starting wages and lack of advancement opportunities when compared with other facilities in the region. We're in a bit of a competition, as we are in other departments as well, but in this case, we've experienced a forty-two percent turnover rate since the beginning of two thousand and eighteen. There are currently twelve correctional officer positions that are vacant out of about ninety-four, I think, positions. So, that's a significant chunk of vacancies. And as a result, other officers are required to work mandatory shifts. They're averaging forty-five mandatory shifts so far this year. That's, you know, pretty much one a week for every correctional officer down there, which means that they're on for sixteen hours at least once a week, some more if they choose to take those shifts voluntarily. As of the time we put the budget together, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars has been spent on mandatory overtime because of vacancies. And so, the warden is proposing to increase the base rate to sixteen dollars and forty-four cents an hour for a starting correctional officer who has completed the six-month probationary period and the required training. There are also going to be additional supervisory positions created, more of a structure, you know, pyramid-type structure there, so that correctional officers have room for advancement and an opportunity to advance, and hopefully that will encourage them to stick around longer and, you know, look for promotions in the ranks. So, those two initiatives, I think, and they're both obviously in response to public safety. You'll see if you look at the charts, that's one of the categories in the budget that has gone up, and these two items here are significantly responsible for those increases. Employee health insurance premiums for the county are flat with no increase for two thousand and nineteen. This is almost unheard of. If you check around to businesses or employers and anywhere, I think, right now, few, if any, are seeing no increase, or even single-digit increases are unheard of right now. But, we're fortunate here. We've had a few consecutive years of good experience. We've had few shock claims, shock claims being those that are just very expensive, either procedures or treatments, that tend to spike the claims. We also have a shock claim cap, which helps in our policy, so that any claim that is a shock claim will be capped at eighty-five thousand dollars. Beyond that, there's another level of insurance that covers that. Obviously, we pay for that extra insurance, but in the long run, I believe that it helps to keep the claims more level. Also, there's been close monitoring of new enrollees and termed employees, so the Human Resources Department works hard at that. So, if someone, say they may resign effective the second of the month, in the past, our coverage would then have taken them to the end of the month. Now, they split that month up and the coverage will end in that case. Someone's in the first two weeks of the month, it'll be the fifteenth. If it's after the fifteenth, it'll be the thirtieth. So, that has saved so far ninety-five thousand dollars this year. But, by just monitoring that and staying on top of that, rather than just letting them ride out for the entire month. And finally, we belong to the Pennsylvania County Health Insurance Program, which is a cooperative of twenty-one counties. They have a lot of bargaining power. When they go to the carriers, they're representing five thousand lives and, you know, have the ability to leverage that when they go for rates and things with our carriers. So, that has also proven to be a benefit. So, I'm very pleased to report that. We're also going to go to paying our premiums at ninety percent of the maximum premium. For years now, we've paid at the maximum premium, which is a sort of a safety net, so you pay the full amount of the premium that's to be expected. Therefore, the, there won't be any surprises. So, if claims increase or claims go over what they are expected to be, there's a possibility of coming back with a surcharge unless you're paying the maximum, which is what we did. If we go to ninety percent, it's still ninety percent of expected, so, and that's where we have safely fallen the last several years, so we have a comfort level. We also have a reserve that is with P-Chip right now, so that if we do go through that maximum layer, that reserve can absorb that. You know, the best analogy I can give is it's sort of like rightsizing your income tax, federal income tax. If you overpay, it's nice to, you know, get a little bit back in a refund. If you underpay, you owe. The goal is to get it right where it belongs, because that's essentially what we're doing here.
And we work with the money and the interest, rather than, in your example, the IRS.
Yes.
Or, yeah.
Premiums basically are going to be ten percent lower because we won't be paying as much. Now, the risk to this, of course, is that, you know, if the claims fall where we expect, we won't get any sort of refund back. But, you know, again, back to the analogy of deductibles. Deductibles and copayments are not changing for two thousand and nineteen for non-union, and the same are part of the collective bargaining agreement respectively for those, for the unions. And the bigger part of the budget that I referred to, or the bigger part of the increases I referred to at the beginning, are capital projects. First paragraph there just sort of lays out what the capital project fund is and why it was created and so on. That's a carryover from my summary of the prior years. So, this is, you know, intended for spikes in the general fund or non-routine expenditures that we don't expect to happen for maybe years in between or only once. And so, the capital project this year, in two thousand and eighteen, was used for the repaving of the parking areas that serve the courthouse. Two thousand and nineteen, expect to use the capital fund for the purchase of voter-verifiable paper record voting systems, which has obviously been in the news lately and something that's been directed by the governor, and also as a result of a lawsuit settlement that the state has agreed to over a suit with the Green Party. So, depending on the final selection of a vendor, right now, that cost is estimated to be between one million and one point seven million. We have the upper-end budget in this budget. So, if it turns out that it comes in lower, that's a benefit to the capital fund, and when that money would stay there, whatever is possibly less than one point seven million. But, according to Mike Anderson's estimates, you know, he does not expect it to be higher than that. Of course, it depends on, again, which vendor, if you go with pole books, not go with pole books. There are a lot of variables in this, so we budgeted to include all the variables. Also included are some funds to complete the parking at M.H.I.D.E.I. and also to construct a delivery entrance to the prison from Metro Drive. Separately from the capital fund, there are past bond proceeds that are still on hand that were intended for a backup nine-one-one center. We're able to utilize those for really anything related to nine-one-one. So, we've got some required nine-one-one upgrades to do and also to begin the process of exploring or acquiring or constructing a new facility for the Department of Emergency Services, which will accomplish a backup by maintaining what we already have in addition to anything that might be new. And lastly, again, a repeat from earlier in the meeting, but this budget includes a Pima grant for nine-one-one technologies, specifically a call handling phone system. That grant of two million, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars was awarded to Lebanon and New York counties for the build-out of the hardware and infrastructure in partnership with New York County. Pima has been awarding grants such as this to support regional technology. They're trying to steer counties away from having their own standalone, expensive systems to maintain. And so, by partnering up, they are offering grants such as this, and this is a one-hundred percent funded grant with no match at all. That's the incentive Pimas dangling out there. So, that's a great score on the part of that Department of Director Dowd, and you guys pointed that out earlier. Implementation of that must and will take place before the end of two thousand and nineteen, and it also comes with the ability to offer text to nine-one-one for callers. So, that's the summary. There's a lot more in the pie charts and tables. I could probably go on for ten pages of things here, but I try to pull the important stuff together and happy to answer any questions or talk about anything else contained in there.
Anyone have any questions for Jamie? Then we're looking for a motion to approve this budget. Is that correct?
Correct. And establish the millage at three point two nine two five mills. Be on display for twenty days and finally adopted on December twenty-seventh.
Do I have a motion in matter of fact?
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Would either of you like to make any comments? I would just briefly say that I think this budget, be successful as it is, is not necessarily the end of the process, but somewhat of a culmination of the work that this board has done over the past seven years to place us in the financial position that we're in, that makes the budgeting process easier if you have money. So, I'm really grateful for the work that we've done and the cooperation of all the departments and so on to make it possible for us to put this budget into position. So, with that said, all, yes?
I did have a comment.
Okay. All right. I thought I asked. I'm sorry.
You did, but there was no time to respond.
Okay.
I was curious, because we did budget the maximum here this last week or so, they raised talk of at least a minimum of fifty percent reimbursement from the state.
You referred to voting machines.
Yes, sir.
I saw that at the Department of State.
And that's the minimum. They're looking for, but that's the minimum. So, my question is, if in the, we budgeted the max, will we have to reopen the budget and adjust that?
No, we would just go unspent. So, if you, for example, if you budgeted one point seven, you know, Governor has asked the legislature to include fifty percent of that money. It remains to be seen whether, you know, how they'll react to that, but probably not until the state budget's passed in June or July. But, you know, if it ends up costing half of that or so, we could just go unspent and remain in the capital.
So, only if you were going to increase it, would you have to reopen the budget?
And even then, only by a certain percentage. And you can only reopen the budget within a few weeks after the passage.
And that's why I'm asking, so I didn't know if we had any.
No, I don't see any reason to. I think, you know, if anything's likely to happen, it would come in at less than one percent. And even the pricing by the vendors is changing by the week.
Yes.
You know, they're obviously positioning themselves with counties to, you know, be each county's selected vendor, and there's competition out there, which is a bear.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the tentative adoption of the budget and the millage rate indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Budget is tentatively approved unanimously. Okay. What else do you have?
A few more things. One, I have a request to approve exemption from real estate taxes for a veteran, and that being for Frederick Mayor of Fox Ridge, Lebanon, who has met all the requirements of disabled veteran, and ask for your approval on that.
Second?
I have a motion in a second to exempt Frederick Mayor from real estate tax. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Next, I have an application for County Liquid Fuel Aid from South London Dairy Township, and they would like to use their annual allocation toward general maintenance, a project cost of seven thousand dollars, their allocation being six thousand, nine ninety-one.
Second?
I have a motion in a second to grant the liquid fuels to South London Dairy Township. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
And I have two applications for hotel tax tourism grants, and I know they've circulated or you've had copies provided. There's one from the Lebanon Valley Exposition Corporation for a grant for facility improvement program, the amount of thirty thousand dollars is that request. And then, there's one from the Lebanon Valley Conservancy to help fund their Cornwall Heritage Trail map, the village of Cornwall, and that request is for sixty-three hundred dollars. So, I don't, I didn't know if you were prepared to act on those today. You can wait until twentieth if you like, or...
I definitely saw the Cornwall Heritage Trail. I don't recall the one for the expo. Was that recent?
It's pretty recent.
What is that to cover? Because I don't remember.
They have, so they have a project of forty-six thousand, four hundred and six dollars. They're requesting thirty thousand of that. They're replacing parking lot lights with LED lights, replacing rain gutters and downspouts in the north hall, electric meters in the arena, sound system upgrades, exterior painting of the east and southeast hall, concrete floor in the sheep and goat barn, and painting the roof, and kibble is on the north hall. There was a narrative...
I definitely didn't see that. If you don't mind that, I get a copy. I appreciate it. Something would have written it now, nothing now.
Who wants to approve both? Second?
I'll second them, but I would like a copy.
All right. Have a motion and a second to approve both those tourism fund grants under the Expo Center, one to the Lebanon Valley Conservancy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
I have a motion in a second to approve both those tourism fund grants under the Expo Center, one to the Lebanon Valley Conservancy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered. That it? Everything I have?
I have a motion to adjourn. All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.